22nd, 4:00 PM, Ottawa City Commission Study Session. Old Star Republic comments, do we have any today?
We do, we have Josh Walker.
All right, Josh, want to come on up? We state your name for everybody and tell us what you got.
All right, my name's Josh Walker, address 912 West Fourth here in Ottawa. Just wanted to give a little background on the project that is out there frickin', I'm working on with converting the Econolodge into apartments. Project's been in development since around the first of the year. That's when I started having serious conversations about procuring the project, or procuring the building for the intended purpose of converting it into apartments for workforce housing. I'd actually been looking for a hotel conversion project for about three years, not only in Ottawa but elsewhere, so it's taken quite a while to find one that actually became viable. Current plan includes turning it into 44 units, that'll be a total of 49 beds, so that's primarily studios and one bedroom, but there will be five two-bedroom apartments there. For comparison's sake, in terms of size, when I renovated 401, which was actually a bigger building than the Econolodge, the upstairs has nine units, which would be 19 beds, so about half. The work that it's going to take to renovate the building is fairly substantial. You would think it would be fairly easy, but when you add a kitchenette to every unit, the codes that are different for apartments versus housing, or hotel, as well as doing the cosmetic upgrades that the building needs, plumbing improvements and things like that, it's going to be pretty significant. We're currently in the final stages of the design. We anticipate starting construction in November, and hopefully, construction will last about eight to nine months. So, from initial concept of having the conversation with the property owner about purchasing the property and renovating it, it'll be about 18 months total, but it'll be over four years from when I first started looking to make this thing come together. During that time, I had some conversations with state legislature about possible funding opportunities. They indicated that housing across the state was a priority for them, and so sharing them the idea that I had, it aligned with what their goals were, and so they were interested in that. Without assistance, I would say that the project would get scrapped at this point. The economics have changed significantly just in these last eight months. The time it took to go through a rezoning exercise, the owner came back and renegotiated purchase price, as well as interest rates going up over 2% in these last eight months, and construction costs have risen nationally about 8% in that timeframe as well. So, without some help, it'll, it would get scrapped because there will still be a substantial amount of my own funds going into this project to make it happen. So, just wanted to give you a quick update on that, and if there's any questions, I can certainly answer.
Is the structural integrity of the building good? I mean, there's no problems there?
That's all good, yeah.
We certainly appreciate, I'm glad that you chose Ottawa, you know, instead of looking elsewhere.
Sure.
We certainly appreciate the investment in our community, as you always do, so. Are there any more questions for Josh from the commission? Blaine, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Melanie, I could come up.
Yeah, please, Josh, thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
So, commissioners, I will hand this around for you. This is from the state budget, the supplemental budget, House Bill 2510. If you look at the third proviso down on this page, this is the 3.1 million that the legislature appropriated to the Department of Commerce. You don't have Page Four. Page Four tells you where all of these appropriations go, which is to the Department of the Governor, which really just means the executive branch. And you'll note that there's an entry here for Northeast Kansas Economic Development, provided that expenditures from the Northeast Kansas Economic Development account shall be used by the above agency, that being the governor's executive branch, for the purpose of the refurbishment of a building for housing in a city in Northeast Kansas with a population greater than 12,200 and less than 12,700 as of the 2020 census. There's only one city in Northeast Kansas that meets that population band, and that's Ottawa. And that is obviously money that was set aside to the Department of Commerce to fund a housing project in Ottawa. As Mr. Walker just told you, his conversations at the state level were about doing this project, providing that estimate of about $3 million to make that project economically feasible. About six weeks ago, we were contacted by the Department of Commerce about the money and the project. We put them in touch with Mr. Walker about the project. They then decided, at first, no problem, they were going to make a direct allocation to Mr. Walker's LLC to do the project. Then they decided, well, we'd really like to give this money to the city of Ottawa and have you all have responsibility for it. And I suspect that has more to do with federal grant guidelines. These are ARPA funds. So, as you know, the American Recovery Plan Act, which was designed to help with COVID, including things like constructing housing, so this is exactly what the bill was for. But rather than they make the determination, they decided to do what they often do with state awards, and they would give that to the city of Ottawa and say, hey, you all pass it through to the worthy project that should receive these funds. So, they added another layer of bureaucracy, which is not always helpful, but in this case, they said, we know this is the project that this allocation was designed for, and so we'll kind of split the difference with you. We'll award the money to the city, but we'll have direct communication with the developer, and they will be providing to us Commerce receipts and doing all of kind of the grant compliance issues directly with the state, and the city just becomes a pass-through for the funds to pass them out. One of the things that will be needed, though, is a sole source determination. That is, that this is the project that the money seems to be earmarked for, that this is the, probably one of the only, if not the only, project in town that this would apply to. That is the refurbishment of an existing building for housing in this amount, and that this is the only project that could be done in this amount of time. And so, you heard today about the time that Mr. Walker spent up to now to try to get the project ready, and then still a phase of construction to go, and there's about 15 months before these grants, funds have to be spent. So, it's probably the, none of the most farthest along project, but the only project that is ready to go. And in terms of commercial buildings, that would actually add housing to the community, it's probably the only building that's ready to be refurbished in this way. So, we will be asking you to allow for the city manager at some point to make a sole source determination, and say, this is the only project that fits the criteria contained in the House bill and contained in what Commerce meant to allocate for. And so, I guess today, Melanie and I just want to talk you through, if you have any questions, on how the money comes to us, what we have to do, how we satisfy Commerce so they can satisfy the feds. We wanted to make sure that we put that discussion on the table for you.
So, just as an aside here, because the public can't see this, see what Blaine handed out, and this is on other pages too, just to let you know, this is not the only one of this type in that budget. For example, here's $5 million for a city in Kansas with a population greater than 24,000, less than 24,500. Here's another 5,000 for a city in Southeast Kansas between 20 and 21. So, it is not the only project where money is put around the state.
If you look two projects down, there's a $20 million allocation for a rural housing grant for a city for an economic development project that will create 500 new jobs. That's the Pillmore Dairy in Dodge City, and that's $20 million in housing for Dodge City. There were projects in Russell, there were projects in Salina, there were projects in Wichita, and they say you should never see laws or sausage being made when they talk about the legislative process. The result sometimes is this kind of budget stuff where it's like, oh, okay, there's only one city that fits that definition, and there's only, you know, one project that that could really apply to. And that's kind of what happened here, that the project defined in terms of doing some housing in this area, which you all have identified as a priority, not only housing, but kind of multifamily apartment-style workforce housing, was this project. And so, we fortunate, we got $3.1 million from the state. Unfortunately, there's a bit of an administrative headache that comes with that, including the requirement for making a sole source determination and being the pass-through for the grant funds from the Department of Commerce. We are certainly not alone in this, as Richard said. This is Page Five. This bill goes on for quite a few pages.
Well, and if the public wants to look at it, I mean, they can certainly look at House Bill 2510.
KSlegislature.org, you can, on the left side, you can search on House Bill 2510. This is the enrolled version. The first line that you'll come to is Enrolled Act. It's a PDF file, you open it up, and you can just go through, and after the governor's message, you can read. And it goes on like this, this is what a state budget looks like. It's literally just allocation after allocation after allocation of funds to various departments for various purposes. And when we got towards the end of the 2022 session, there were still ARPA funds available. Some of those were through the Spark Committee, some of those went through the state budget process, and so, we began to say, okay, we're in pretty good shape financially from a state budget perspective, have a billion dollars in the Rainy Day Fund, Capers is 80% funded. You know, housing seemed to be the, kind of the third highest priority for people around the state, particularly in rural areas, and Franklin County qualifies as one of those. How do we put money into housing in rural areas? And so, you all are right now undergoing your MIH project and your RFP for that. That's for new housing, that's for, for not rehabilitation necessarily of existing structures, it's usually creation of new, like the Prairie Fire development up on the north side that did duplexes. This is a specific allocation for a specific project, so it's kind of differentiated from the general monies that we're putting for housing.
So, there will be some administrative expense on the city for some of this, a minimal amount, but what do you?
You want to speak to the amount of time you think your department will take?
I don't think you'll see a physical expense, it'll just take the amount of time that, just like some of our other grant tracking takes. And we'll want to make sure that we're running it through, you know, it's going to be in a separate fund, it's going to be, you know, we're going to have to make the allocations back out once those expenditures are certified, so, you know, there'll be a process to it.
So, the property tax is on the property, will more than compensate any kind of expense what the city pays.
So, can you say that it's, as the expenses are certified, meaning that when the work's done and paid for, then he's reimbursed, correct? Right, yeah. Mr. Walker asked to provide both to the city and to the state satisfactory proof that the money's been spent and done in a reasonable manner. So, it's, you know, this is the normal cost of drywall, this is the normal cost of, you know, PVC pipe and all of the things that go in there. Those receipts all have to be provided, and then a disbursement is made from the grant.
And normally, it would be our burden to thoroughly review and justify those expenditures, but the Department of Commerce is going to do that part of this project, that was kind of their part of the project.
And that was our responsibility on the Prairie Fire project, right? To certify all that.
Yeah. So, it creates, it takes a lot of the administrative burden off the city, and part of that is their recognition that this allocation was drafted in a way that it was originally intended to be their burden and not fall to the city, so they're going to say, yeah, we'll keep that burden, and all they're asking you all to do is make that sole source determination that, hey, this is the farthest along project, the one most likely to be done in this amount of time, and really, the only one that's feasible to take these funds to create housing from something that's not currently housing and meet the definition within the statute, so.
And, Mr. Walker, I'm pretty sure with 10 months already involved in the project itself, you've, you're out of pocket quite a bit of money already, so this isn't just like, hey, we're coming in, and, you know, the state's coming in and giving you a bunch of money to do your project.
Right, yeah, I was, I was down the road quite a bit before this even became a possibility.
Commissioners, it would be nice if we had some consensus from you today, that the city manager can say that this is that sole source project, so that we can communicate that back to Commerce. We will have an agreement for you on the grant and an upcoming agenda, but if there were consensus today to allow us to proceed with that determination, that would help us get the agreements in front of you.
So, you're just looking for consensus today, but there's no document?
Right, right, we'll get the document to you. In fact, I just got it as I was walking in here from Bob North at Commerce. Commissioners, do we have a consensus?
Yeah.
I think we do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more public comments?
You do that.
Thank you. Got to move this on to items to be placed in the regular city commission agenda, which is our minutes from our August 3 regular meeting, our August 8 study session, and our August 15 study session. Commissioners, did you have a chance to look that over? And so, are you good with moving that on to our regular agenda?
Yes.
All right. We'll do that, thank you. Move this on to items for presentation and discussion. Number one item is a recommendation to add properties at 503 and 505 North Main to the Neighborhood Revitalization Program. Director Hall.
Good afternoon.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I take it Matt will advance the slides?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's why I didn't. Okay, so, previously, earlier study session and then at the last meeting, we presented 10 properties to you to be accepted in the Neighborhood Revitalization Program. One of those 10, you did not want to, you did not feel comfortable approving at the last meeting, you held it over, just, you had some questions. I was a little unsure about answering the question before, I wanted to make absolutely certain. I think your question was the nature of the project, and if it included both 503 and 505 North Main. And so, to answer that question, it includes 503 and 505 North Main. The parcel is identified as 503 North Main, so it's all one tax parcel. So, go to the next slide, please. Okay, so, the description of the project, they're converting the building into two apartment areas for residential use. It's the ground floor, so currently, there's an apartment on the second floor, according to the appraiser, and so, they're converting the ground floor of 503 and 505 North Main from retail to residential apartments. The current appraised value is about $170,000, and this adds value of $85,000 to the appraised value. With that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
So, could we go back to that picture of the building, so they look like two different buildings, but it's one address that's where our tax rolls go?
Okay, so, that's probably why there's a little confusion. If you go out there, I couldn't even see 505 on the building, honestly, on the one on the left, but the one on the right is, address is 503.
So, one already has an apartment upstairs?
Yes.
And then it'll be built on the other side, we'll have an apartment then also. Are there multiple apartments then? Looks like there's enough, there's several, but I didn't know if their plans were...
So, Commissioner, it looks like there would be two apartments, if you look at it, it looks like there'd be two apartments on the upper floor, but according to the appraiser, it's just a single apartment. I don't know any more than that as far as how it's laid out, but the way it's proposed, the building on the right will have an apartment on the ground floor, and the building on the left will have an apartment on the ground floor.
Have they already determined the zoning is okay with that?
Zoning is okay, it's mixed-use residential-commercial zoning. And parking, so, the way the parking situation works, it's going from retail to residential, so actually, it'll probably result in less parking required, certainly by our ordinance. There's parking in the back, it's somewhat unimproved, but there is some parking in the back off of Hickory.
Commissioners, any other questions for Director Hall?
Has work already started on this project?
We have issued building permits, they have started doing some work. There's some work on the ground floor, they're not, I was out there today and didn't see anybody working there, so I don't know what's going on exactly. They actually added a window to the north side of the building, and that's problematic from a code, but we're looking at that.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Would you like to act on this, Commissioner?
I think I could get moved to the agenda. September 7.
Yeah, we'll move it on to September 7th agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Got to move this on to item two, which is continuing review of our 2023 operating budget. Director Landis.
I'll get it clear. I'll do a few things here.
So, while we're bringing up the PowerPoint, I asked Brianna to join us. She has done a lot, almost all, of the back-end part of budget, and you only get to see my smiling face during these meetings, but I figured that she needed to be included in part of this, and this is our final presentation to you, or one of the last couple of conversations. So, anyway, so if you have questions, as we move along, she can help to answer those too. Maybe we won't put her on too much of the podcast. So, while it's still coming up, one of the things that we've talked about multiple times, that you've seen all of the budget presentation, the last time we met was in July, towards the end of July, and we had a conversation about where we wanted to publish, what mill rate we wanted to publish at, and since that time, we have not made any changes necessarily to the details that were originally presented to you all along. I did leave a lot of those slides in here, mostly for the public's information, especially since we're really coming up on that public hearing, which is on September 7, at 7:00. So, wanted to, wanted to make sure that we kept some of that information in there. We'll kind of breeze through it in our conversation unless you have some specific questions, but otherwise, we shouldn't need to go through everything in detail. Thank you. I always go the wrong way. All right. So, the, this is just a reminder, and especially for the public, I know you've all have seen this, so, our assessed valuation is really what drives the mill rate in the end, however much that percentage is, or what the value is of one mill is determined by your assessed valuation. And so, you can see that for 2022's valuation, which is what supports our 23 budget, that went up 10.67% over last year's valuation. This is just a reminder again of our mill rate history, and that over time, we have, you know, kept it fairly stable, if not declining over multiple years in our mill rates. That does not necessarily mean that the property taxes for the city, or in total for any one resident, have gone down, but would have decreased slightly for the city's portion as we lower those, or the impact would have decreased slightly for the city's mill rate. This is the public budget notice, this was published on the 20th, was, so this weekend, it, as one of the requirements is that it's published at least 10 days in advance of the hearing, that it goes on our website, and that we did also put it out on Facebook, or we're going to, one of the two. So, throughout our multiple ways, this information has gotten out. Also, the newest piece for this year is that you should have received in the mail a statement from the county, and hopefully, it's easy to read, it's difficult. I know that the county was struggling with the best way to be able to present that information, I'm sure every county was in that same situation, so they had to issue statements for every taxing agency that would have appeared on each resident or each address, and then be able to provide that to each one of those people. So, it was, I think, a very difficult task, the timing, I think, was terrible, and I think they did a great job of just getting it out the door on time and in the hands of everyone, and if you have questions, or if the public has questions about what those really mean, we can try to help to explain that. But essentially, it should have shown you what that revenue neutral rate was, what the valuation is, and what the increase in percentages overall between the mill rates that are being, that were being recommended at that time. So, that's what we were going to publish. That is your maximum mill rate. So, your maximum mill rate is 45.968. That mill rate generates $5,610,387. Those two numbers are your maxims, and then each fund has its own maximum that you can go above, but you can always lower any one of those after your public hearing, well, even before your public hearing. But once we go, before we adopt the budget, that's the maximum that you could adopt any one of those funds, or your total budget. This is just, I love this slide in here, we have this in here with the library presented, they are a taxing, one of the funds in our property tax mill rate, and they have presented to you their total, that mill rate is actually going down slightly for this year. The Auditorium Fund is a level mill rate for this year, as is the Debt Service Fund, and the General Fund was published at a level mill rate as well. When we, between the time that we presented our original budget and the time that we published this, we, there was a discussion amongst the commission to publish this at the same mill rate as last year. That generated an amount of $62,350. Right now, that amount is, will be put in a contractual services line item, in a special projects division within the General Fund, so that it's allocated for that project. Do you have questions on the General Funds?
No.
These are, again, the original requests that are included, and have the amounts that they would have a budget impact in the General Fund. And again, I'm not going to go through every one of them, unless you really want to, and you've seen these lots of times, so, if you want to backtrack to any of this, we certainly can. This is the altered or deferred items from our original presentations. The changes that were made in total were about $930,000, and so, I think that is, I think, reflective of the staff's, you know, hard work as far as trying to figure out what it is that's needed, and how we can still accomplish what's needed, and move things around in order to meet that budget, and present to you with something that is feasible for this current year's proposed budget. These are the beginning and ending balances for all of the special revenue fronts, the revenue and expense. As a reminder, special revenue funds have their own dedicated type of revenue, or the types of expenditures that they can have in each one of those funds. So, we always budget based on our best estimate of what's going to be coming in. A lot of times, you'll see these funds as being the ones that may end up with an amended budget at some point, because we either had excess revenue come in, or there was an expenditure we didn't anticipate. Often, always, these will be the funds that you always want to make sure you also have a reserve fund balance in, typically, the amount of your ending fund balance, so that you know that you can spend that if you need or when you need.
And when are these dollars calculated? When is the beginning fund balance as of?
That's as of my estimate for the end of 2022. So, it would be the beginning of '23, that's what I'm estimating will be. Now, again, those will probably, those will change, there's no way that I was dead on on any one of those, but based on what we know and estimates, like say, for instance, if it's sales tax, if we applied the same percentage increase over the last remaining months of this year, I would have done that equally across all of the different funds that get sales tax as a revenue. If it gets highway dollars, it's just an estimate, right? Because we don't know exactly what that is going to be coming in. So, these are just estimated amounts for your beginning fund balance. There are also estimates for your actual revenue that might come in in 2023. Everything, especially in the special revenue funds, are estimates. That is also the case for your enterprise funds or your utility funds. These funds specifically are, they have a dedicated revenue source, and they have to be used, those funds have to be used for each of those utilities, you cannot mesh those dollars together and/or use each utility fund for other utilities. So, this is based on what we know, best guessed estimate, as at this point, this year, where we will end this year, is your beginning budget balance for next year, beginning fund balance for next year, and then the revenues are based on a small incremental increase. The expenditures are actually based on what we think needs to be completed for next year. As you can see, especially on the water fund, we have some work to do on our expenditures, absolutely, we need to... Absolutely, we need to bring that fund balance up to a level that is maybe more acceptable for a water utility. We will have to go back and do some hard work on those expenditures. We also need to have a further conversation with all of you on utility rates. I believe that we'll do that in September. That conversation really shouldn't impact this budget that's being presented to you. The, if those rates were to be adjusted, that would, in general, bring in more revenue, but it doesn't necessarily mean that there would be any more expenditures in that year. A lot of times, you would do that in advance of bigger projects that are coming up down the road so that you can make sure you've built cash for those.
Those, all four of them, expenditures are higher than the revenues projected, I know, but...
That is true.
And we should talk about those.
Yes, absolutely. And the last slide is really just about the budget schedule that's remaining. It's this evening's conversation, next Monday, and then we have the Labor Day holiday is the Monday right before our evening meeting, so we won't have a meeting then to discuss. And then on the 7th, at seven o'clock, is our final budget presentation, your public hearing and an opportunity to adopt the budget that evening. Should you have conversations where you don't, aren't ready to proceed with that, you would need to hit that at the second regular meeting in September. We have to certify everything by October 1st to the county. So you have two opportunities to actually adopt that budget. But the public hearing will be both to exceed the revenue neutral rate and for the 2023 budget, you can, those will be held at the same time. Do you have questions about what's been presented so far and again this evening?
Do you know if people don't have that copy from the county? Can they call the treasurer's office? Or who would they call to get that? If they threw it away or didn't pay attention to it and now want to go back and see on their tax?
I don't actually know the answer to that. I believe that the county clerk's office is who mailed those out, so I would assume that they could contact them. That's an assumption on my part.
Yep.
Commissioners, any other questions? You'd like to?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do you, do you all want to review this again next Monday? I'm going to do a quick overview. It'll just be available for questions if you have any. Maybe not necessarily another presentation, but I'd like to start preparing the actual final budget memo for you for your public hearing, your final.
To me, this wasn't too extensive, and I think if somebody missed tonight's meeting in the last three months, you know, maybe we'll see next meeting.
Yeah, that's great, that's great.
And review it then, so I'm okay with that.
That's fine, okay, perfect. And I'll make sure that this makes it into the next packet. I apologize if this was not into your packet or out to you before today.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you both. That'll move us on to item three, which voting, which is voting delegates for the League of Kansas Annual Conference with Melissa Reed. How are you?
Good. Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. I have before you this afternoon an annual item that the League has requested. Their annual conference is October the 8th through October 10th. We are allowed three voting delegates and three alternatives. So I'm just bringing this before you to begin the discussion on who we want to have as our delegates and who we want to have as our alternatives.
Do we have it usual? I mean, I know some of it's all dependent on who's going to be there.
We usually start there.
Yeah. It's a good start, yes.
It's a good starting point. If you're not going to be there, you're kind of taking yourself out.
Can't zoom in?
Nope, not this year. Everything's in person.
It is the meeting, it's on the 10th, or is it?
It is on the 10th.
It's on the 10th itself.
Yeah, from 12 to 1:30.
So I think I can probably be there.
I can certainly be there too.
I can be there as well.
Okay, so we have four for sure, three for sure.
That's great.
Two, Sarah has to be there, so.
Sarah has to be there.
Yeah, okay.
And you want to be there.
You want to be there.
I don't want to come.
Yeah, I mean, that's great.
I'm willing to be there.
And Melissa, are you, are you available that day?
Sorry, I don't believe I'm available that day.
Okay. So we have four that are going.
So there's your three plus your alternate.
There you go. We need three alternates.
Three alternates? We only have five.
What's going on?
Three commissioners and alternatives.
So in the past, we had an alternate as a staff member. I think Richard was an alternative last year, and I think myself was as well. I will not be attending the conference this year though, just as an FYI.
Will you be there? Will you be there?
Yes.
Okay, so there's five.
Yes.
So do we, I guess we...
You don't have to. It really is, actually, you don't have to choose delegates, it says may, but you're better off if you do have an alternate in case somebody can't make it. So I would, I'd choose the city attorney because he wants to attend this.
I just got a dirty one from the HR director, said she really wanted to be the alternate.
Everybody wants to go.
She loves classes and sending people to them, and would like to go to some more of her own.
Well, I guess let's, since we know we have five going. Since we know we have five going, let's do the three, I guess, voting delegates, and then the two left over can just be the alternates at the meeting. So I'd be okay with being one of the delegates. Mayor Prokhorov's getting more.
I'll be a delegate.
There you go.
No, because I'm probably going to have to present at this meeting anyway, so it's okay if I'm not also voting on what I'm presenting, so.
Good, so there's your three voting delegates and the two alternates.
I appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thank you. All right, that'll move us on to comments by the city manager.
All right, so I do have three things. First one is Legacy Square Restrooms. They are closed until we get a handle on the loitering down there. We have also experienced vandalism inside the restrooms. Community Development Director, Public Works Director, Chief of Police and I had a conference this afternoon, about an hour conference. There's going to be some further discussions with the city attorney about what we can do, what we can't do. But be real honest with you, it is a frustrating situation because nothing we do seems to change behaviors. And it is especially frustrating because that is a taxpayer facility and the taxpayers are not able to use it. The other alternative is just to open it up, and we'll be repairing things, and the taxpayer will still not be able to use it. All right. Any questions on that?
Unintended consequences, I guess, on that whole project that you couldn't foresee, at least I didn't. I do have people that complain they can't seem to use the facility that they paid for, and a lot of the people who are loitering there did not contribute financially to this, I'm aware of. So that does kind of seem like a paradox.
Well, I agree with your decision, I think you're doing the right thing, so.
As far as Forest Park goes, are those restrooms are open, or is that...?
Yes, those restrooms are open, and we have not had any significant problems in the work.
All right. So much for restrooms. All right, Elm Street, there is renewed interest in purchasing the lots on Elm Street. How would you like to do that? Is there a process? The only thing I would tell you is that we would, if you want to go through a process, we'd probably shorten up the period for it and may rework how we work those.
I think selling, I think the expense we've gone through to keep them loaded as far exceeds the need to keep it, so I'd say let's put that for bids and see if we can sell them.
So how would you like to do the bidding process? Because, I mean, in my mind, both of them have worked before, you know, the sealed bid and the option. How would we like, we'd like to move forward on the actual bidding process.
I'm in favor of sealed bid.
Pardon me?
I'm in favor of sealed bid.
Yeah, that's fine. Do you want to put any conditions on that? Like you sell both lots at the same time, or you're willing to sell them separately?
I'd like to actually think about that, since it's, I'd like to think about it. But yeah, I do think that there need to be conditions. I certainly don't want somebody to acquire them and then they sit there for the next 10 years. And so would like something built on them, they're wanting to buy them.
Talking about the two lots, we've got three, two lots, there's one, there's one lot?
We don't own the one, we don't own one of them.
You have two lots, you have two lots, there's one in the middle which has recently changed hands from what I understand. And then you have a sliver at the north end there, which can probably be acquired by whoever buys these lots.
So the person who can get that bids for both as one sale, or you want the price of seven...
Well, that's what I'm asking you, how do you want to do it?
Could you get different people involved, so like separate bids would be better?
Yeah, I think selling them separate would be fine. I also would be, you know, interested in seeing some movement on fairly quickly after changing hands. But I think we'd like, as Commissioner Kayler said, I think there's some thinking we need to do about this and maybe come back to you next week with some of these answers.
We'll go ahead and draft something for you to look at next week.
Be free to do.
When I say we, I mean the city clerk and I.
Great job.
On those, has there been any interest, since they do butt right up to the trail, been any interest or anything relating to the trail specifically about property?
There was talk at one time about some things you could do down there that may enhance the trail. It really depends upon what you think is more valuable, housing down there or you have that as part of the trail. I would tell you there are some uses I simply would not do, and a lot of it is because of the situation we're in with Legacy Square, which is really too bad. All right, anything else of that? And then probably just, I just kind of want to wrap up a discussion you've had in the past. First one's fairly simple because I think you're on the way to doing it. When you talked about the mill levy, keeping it at the same rate, you talked about using that extra money to start the process for a new aquatic center next year. I think that is the right thing to do. That gets you, that starts getting you into the process of working on that and getting the public involved, and I know we'll have conversations about that later on. And the other one is, I saw this again over the weekend, is the discussion of a splash park or a splash pad. I know there's been conversations about people interested in wanting to be a part of that, even donate a part of it. And it's, I would tell you, that's probably the easier conversation to have with the public, and I think it's a great opportunity to get the public involved and get the buy-in. And what I would suggest to you is, and I'm going to ask Casey Colburn to come in, we actually, on the staff level, have been working for him several years about refining a cost estimate for a splash pad. I think what the value of having Casey come in is he can actually give you a primer of what a splash pad is and what a splash pad isn't. You can ask questions about where they recommend location, what they look for when they put a location in. But I think it helps you get the conversation started, and I would not have him in likely until after Labor Day. That's all I have.
I went along with that line, would we need to get the play task force involved too? Or some input, I assume they could have some ideas, input, whatever we, as that would involve, someone was there to do already, but shout out to them as well, maybe we get somebody, I'm not sure who's in charge of it. I mean, UBS League was the chairman, I believe, but I'm not sure. I can do something to find out. Point that we have, I think, the better for the community and overall, I would hope that had that discussion.
I also think the League's annual conference is a great time for us as commissioners to actually have conversation with other commissioners about how they went about developing splash pads in their community and how they went about that process. We certainly don't have to reinvent the wheel on this. There's lots of communities that are doing these particular projects. You know, I can name a half dozen right off the top of my head, and I think it's a conversation that each of us as commissioners, it would be really a benefit to us to have those conversations just while you're sitting there in a breakout session, say, how'd you guys do it? Because we don't have to reinvent the wheel.
A lot of the community smaller than ours have to have.
Absolutely.
And if you remember right, you actually participated in discussions with other managers that had formed the land bank before you ever formed yours. There was some of the, there was that information gathering. And Commissioner Kayler's right, the League's a good opportunity to talk to other communities who have been through this. And every community is unique, but you at least get that, that base information. You're able to file that away, you're able to talk about that publicly. I think it's critical to ask, how did you involve the public in this? How did you get buy-in from the public? That's it.
That'll move us on to comments by our city commissioners. Commissioner Kayler?
None at this time.
Commissioner Graves?
I have no comment.
Commissioner Clayton?
None at this time.
Mayor Prokhorov's getting more.
And Airport Day, Airport Fun Day, I should have thought about just Airport Day, it's Fun Day. This Saturday starts at eight o'clock, I guess, yeah, eight to 1:00 p.m. They have a breakfast where you give a donation and a lot of things going on that day. So check it out, the airport, this Saturday, eight to one.
You're pulling an airplane?
I'm not. But somebody's pulling an airplane, so come watch that. It's a lot of fun to watch.
And Mayor Tim Skidmore stole my thunder, so I won't remind anybody about what he just said about Airport Fun Day.
What you do on a team?
Well, we're on a team, I just know it's Airport Fun Day.
I thought there was a city commission team. Isn't that right?
We'll have to look back.
We can, for sure, we can pull a Sessna 172.
Start with the 152, just go, go low. Go low, lower her expectations.
Use a lighter.
Yeah.
Maybe the drone that we have, would that count?
Sure.
That'll move us on to our announcements, which is next Monday, we have a study session at 4:00 p.m. here. Our Labor Day, September 5th, meeting is canceled. And then we have our regular meeting at 7:00 p.m. September 7th. Is there anything else to come before the commission this evening? I will adjourn.